Welcome to the Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to support this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel twelve, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Senate, to the United States, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business is the school committee student advisory with Mr. Dunkerly and his students. Take it away. Uh, thanks, Mr. Kelly. Um, students, go ahead, please.
Thomas, I think we're starting.
Okay, great. So, yes, hi, everyone. I'll be updating on Ultimate. So it's my understanding the administration has been working out the details for Ultimate over the past few months as it is a club, but also, you know, of course, an athletic activity. And now Core at Sea Kids are going to be able to play Ultimate. Um, but it'll be an interest school thing, interest school thing with four coed teams that'll play against each other um, and not um, other towns, to my understanding. And it, the season's going to start the day after April break on April twenty sixth, so there's that. Hi, everyone. I'll be updating on Key Club. So recently, they just transitioned over to a new board. They held elections a couple of weeks ago. And they also just held an environmental cleanup project around the local parks. Um, so this year, Mr. DeBurn, who's been the advisor for twelve years, has retired. And now they're uh, they're electing the new advisors, which would be English teachers, Mrs. Heston and Mrs. Gisellas, that are taking over next year.
I'm going to be talking about a program we have at LHS called LHS Connects. Um, so at LHS, we have a class called Peer Leadership. And the peer leaders facilitated um, their first session of LHS Connects uh, this past week with twenty-six people in attendance. Um, it was in-person on Wednesday morning in the back gym. Um, they were um, they will facilitate another session tomorrow morning, uh, again with twenty-six in-person uh, attendees. They also offered a remote option, but there weren't enough people um, who registered to make it happen. Um, so due to the half-day uh, schedule, they have had to cut their uh, timeframe in half. And so um, they're not able to do as much, but they've still been able to um, keep their focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Students engage in discussions on microaggressions, understanding um, privilege, the stages of grief as related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, ally behaviors, and resilience. All activities were adapted to maintain physical distancing. And the first session went very well, and participants impressed with their passion and engagement.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'll be updating you on GSA. So um, I believe it was last week or two weeks ago, GSA presented to the faculty of Long Meadow High School to provide information on LGBTQ topics that would support the LGBTQ students of Long Meadow. The club presented to three different groups of faculty, answering any anonymous and live questions about understanding and supporting the LGBTQ students. GSA also explained the definitions, terms, and symbols of the community. They eventually ran out of time in each of their sessions, but they felt that the meeting was a very positive experience for everyone, and they hope to work with faculty more in the future.
Hi, everyone. I will be talking about As Schools Match Wits, which is LHS's trivia team. Uh, they performed well at their past tournament, which was called the Blender Bowl, and that was a virtual tournament. Um, and they continue to meet virtually as they prepare for future term.
And that's all for our clubs. And then we had two other things we wanted to talk about. The first was uh, the question of uh, parking fees, student parking fees. Uh, so obviously, the history of that is that uh, in two thousand and fifteen, the SCAC worked with the school committee to bring that down from almost two hundred dollars to the today's cost of thirty dollars. Um, and this year, there wasn't uh, the students weren't charged parking fees uh, at all. Uh, given that many students aren't even at school, uh, or for part of the year, they weren't coming to school. Um, and I guess the question that we wanted to ask is, are they, are, is the school committee, um, are we looking to bring back student parking fees in uh, next year, back to the thirty-dollar parking fee? And I guess uh, the other two questions I go with that is um, I understand that the student uh, the student parking fee is used to uh, for maintenance of the parking lot and uh, so that, that being uh, snow cleaning and line repainting that they did a few years ago. Um, and I wonder, is uh, is that funding also used to clean the teacher's side of the parking lot, which teachers obviously don't pay for um, unlike students? And then I also wonder, are there any other student, uh, are there any town-owned parking lots that are maintained with user fees in town, like any other school parking lots? Um, so I wonder if the school was able to find funds, and I wonder how it was able to find funds this year to fund uh, school parking lots, uh, the, the student parking lot. Um, could that continue into the future, just as it was done this year? Um, and could we continue not having a student, a student parking lot passes in future like we did this year? That was, I guess, the conversation we hope to have. Uh, and then the uh, the other uh, question that we were looking at as something that came out of this pandemic here is uh, ju- juniors and seniors this year had the opportunity to um, have an op- open campus, experience an open campus. So what we did in the past week is we surveyed juniors to see if they would like to see a continuation of the open campus ice block policy for next year. So ice blocks at high school are study blocks, and we've had them before this year, and students could even leave uh, before this year, granted, they brought in a parent note ahead of time in the morning of the same day. Uh, this year, students, seniors, and juniors could sign out once with the permission of their parents at the beginning of the year, uh, and then had the ability to leave ice blocks to study at home for the whole year. While we understand that a normal lunch uh, schedule, leaving for lunch may be complicated, uh, about ninety-nine, over ninety-nine percent of the hundred and thirty-two juniors that responded to our survey said that they would like to see this single-time uh, sing- one-time sign-out process continue into the future. Um, as opposed to signing out every single morning uh, that you would want to leave ice throughout the day. Um, well, I do think this is more of a decision made on the administration side. The SCAC wanted also to make the school committee aware of the survey and its uh, results. And those are the two other things we wanted to cover.
Thank you, Maxum. I think on the, the first one about the uh, parking lots, I think Mr. Razan, maybe that's a topic for finance subcommittee to discuss. And we'd be able to answer your specific questions and then get into um, a plan for the future. So yes, that is something that we will uh, discuss in, in our subcommittee and then bring back to the full committee. I think as far as the um, open campus, that, that seems to be an administration thing for the high school more than us. I would say as a parent of a current twelfth grader, I appreciate the blanket note so that I didn't have to write a hundred of them. So um, I'd, I'd be in favor of it, but I don't think I'm actually making that decision, Maxum, so. Um, that's something that I guess you can, Mr. Dunkerly can speak to Mr. Landers about and have a discussion at the administration level. As always, I want to say that we're incredibly impressed with the commitment and the actions of the students of LHS. Uh, you guys do us proud every time you come here, so we appreciate it very much. Members, any, any questions or comments for the students? Kevin?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the report as well. And, and one thing I, I just wanted to throw out there, I mean, maybe Paul can bring this back to the administration. Uh, I just wonder if, if we've, what we've seen about the performance of students who have taken advantage of the open campus. I'll say for my daughter, this was her best year ever in high school. And in talking to her, she felt like the ability to be able to come and go as she pleased really helped her focus when she needed to and to take a break when she could. Um, and she also contends that's going to prepare her better for college, which I think is also a compelling argument. So it might be really interesting to see if we have any data on the students who took advantage of that. Did they improve based on how they did in prior years?
So Ryan, if I could just jump in on that for a minute. So I don't have the specific data that you're talking about, Kevin, but we have acts, we, we certainly have the information available. But what I can say is that it's been a mixed bag. Uh, for some students, you know, like your daughter, um, this has worked out really well, and she has thrived in this environment. I can tell you that we have had what feels like many more students who have struggled in this environment and have not done as well. But uh, that's anecdotal at best, to be fair. Um, so I will pull the data and crunch it once, once we get more toward the end of the year. Uh, and to uh, to Chairman Kelly's point, yes, we're, we're already in discussions about uh, how we're going to manage uh, ice blocks and um, dismissals for ice blocks into next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunkerly. Anyone else with a question or comment? All right, students, was that, I, I cut you off after Maxum because I thought that was the end, correct?
Yes. Uh, I'm also not going to be here for the later student report. I have to go early, so that was all for the student reports.
All right. Thanks, Maxum. Thank you, everybody. Kevin, next up on our agenda is correspondence.
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. An emailed letter from Mr. Frank Lukasik dated March thirtieth regarding bus transportation. An emailed letter from Ms. Angelique Skurins dated April first regarding the district professional development. An email memo, memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis of C-Tech dated April second regarding the students of the months, month for March two thousand and twenty-one. Long Meadow student honored this month was Logan Jubair Hopkins for integrated occupational prep. An emailed letter from Ms. Bernadette Dunurban dated April sixth regarding fully reopening the schools. That's it for correspondence.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval of minutes. If anyone would like to make a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
Sarah Second?
Second.
There, discussion. Sit, not a pop for, I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
Um, under number nine, there was just a misspelling of uh, Ms. Swanier's name.
Thank you. We'll make sure Diane gets that. So can we have a, a motion on amended? So moved. Second again?
Second.
Any more discussion? Call for a vote, Brownman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
Ryan?
Oh, Tiana, I'm sorry. Tiana?
Yes.
I was scanning the screen. I missed you. I'm sorry. So that passes, uh, six-zero. Next up, we have visitor comments. Any of our visitors this evening that would like to make themselves known if they're interested in speaking? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Uh, members, any announcements? Tiana?
Thanks, Ryan. I just wanted to thank uh, and congratulate all of the students and families and staff that led or participated in the Earth Day cleanup on a Sunday. Um, I was driving around and, and saw a whole bunch of people. I know that Dylan Ratner, a student, was um, super involved with leading my daughter's team. And uh, I saw some faces on here earlier of some students, so it was just uh, it was awesome. So thank you to everybody that, that led that or participated in that.
Thank you. Certainly a great event. Brownman?
Thank you. I just wanted to um, say that I've received a couple of emails from students um, working on their civics projects, and they all seem like very interesting topics. And I'm wondering if, when they're done, we might be able to get them to come and maybe present some of the, of their findings. Thanks.
Thank you, Brownman. Marty, go ahead.
Thank you for that. Um, and, and thanks to the committee members who um, have received some of those emails. And, and so that, it's nice to see that the civics action work uh, in process. And in fact, that, that we, we were hoping to have students come at some point to present the results of their civic action studies. Megan Schwartz, uh, is the department chair of the high school, and actually volunteered to come tonight. I said, thank you very much, but I think the committee would appreciate also having the, the student uh, students as well. So uh, when those reports are wrapped up, we'll, we'll try to uh, convince some students to join us here. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Brownman. Anybody else? Kevin?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to highlight um, a, a piece that I saw in Mass Live that I don't know if people saw it, and probably I should share it with the committee if folks didn't see it. But um, it was a really impressive piece by Alexander Lamb um, that was talking about his family being verbally harassed for being Asian-American. Um, and, and that this stuff happens in Long Meadow, and it happened to one of our students. And, and I think it's really important for us to recognize that the anti-racist work that we're doing as a district is critically important because this stuff is happening here. Um, and I think that, that piece really uh, was really well done. Um, and I, I recommend that everybody take a look at it to recognize um, just the, the impact of hate in our community and why it's so important, the work that we're all doing.
Great point. Thank you, Kevin. All right. We can move on to business with guests. Marty, middle school facility report?
All right. Thank you. As you can see, we're, we have some uh, some guests with us tonight. We're excited to uh, bring to you the report that um, culminates a, a another hard look that we took at the uh, conditions of our middle schools in terms of the, the physical plants. And so as a, as a lead-in to the report that our guests will provide, just want to, if I could, just a couple of quick slides here. So this is a, a, a slide that I've used in the past that, uh, in my view, sort of captures where we are with our middle schools. We, we have been, and we remain at a crossroads in terms of addressing the uh, physical plant needs of our two middle schools. And at, at a very high level, the, the conclusion that we've made in the past and that frankly will be uh, confirmed tonight through the report that Colliers will provide is that, that the needs of our middle schools in terms of the physical plants exceed what can be addressed through normal um, year-to-year operations or capital investments. And so this is a, this was confirmed to us back in two thousand and fifteen when uh, J C J had uh, taken a, another look at our middle schools. And this year, uh, given the amount of time that has passed, we uh, invited uh, Colliers to take a look at uh, our middle schools as well and to provide us with an update on the condition of the two schools. So tonight, uh, representing the, the Colliers team is Alan Minkus, Chip Phillips, Tim Alex, and, and Adam D'Alessio. And I'll quickly turn it over to, to the team to provide you with uh, the most recent uh, evaluation of the condition of our middle schools and the, and the repairs that are in front of us. And then following the presentation, um, I'll, I'll spend just a couple of minutes talking about what uh, our potential next steps are. Uh, not that there would be any expectation of any decisions tonight, but this is really more of an informational report that will um, help us decide uh, what path to take going forward to address the needs of our two middle schools. The, you know, the shorthand explanation I often give is that um, I think you'll, and I think you'll see this again confirmed here tonight, is that uh, we, we have, something must be done. To do nothing is not an option. We have some, you know, significant needs in front of us. Uh, these are important physical assets belonging to the community. And uh, we, we need to make some decisions about how to move forward and ensure that we have uh, physical plants that support the type of educational program that we know on this community expects. So I will, uh, I'll turn it over to the team. They've uh, provided us with a file that I will switch over to right now. And uh, as, as I pull up the new uh, slide deck, uh, Alan, if you'd like to begin with the introduction of the team and explain what we're trying to accomplish tonight, and as you're doing that, I'll pull up your slide deck.
Great. Thank you, Marty. Um, I'm Alan Minkus. Uh, I'm a senior director at Colliers Project Leaders. And I believe back in January or so, we, we um, had conversations with Marty and Tom uh, to try and um, take another look at uh, your facilities there for both the Glenbrook and William School. And Chip Phillips with us tonight um, is an expert in doing facilities, conditions assessments, FCA's. And so we brought uh, Chip in uh, to uh, do that, uh, with his team, to do that and go through both schools and look at what some of the um, issues are that need to be addressed. At the same time, um, I have Tim Malik with me and Adam D'Alessio. Tim is a senior project manager with Colliers Project Leaders, and Adam is a project manager with, uh, project, uh, Colliers Leaders. Uh, and Adam is also a resident of Long Meadow, uh, Mass as well. But what we took a look at is um, uh, taking a look at what the, how the MSBA looks at a project and um, how they accept people into the program with a statement of interest into what they call a capital pipeline project. And from that, um, the um, statement of interest is very important to get elected or brought into that, that process. So we took a look um, as a, as a group um, at the way um, Long Meadow had done previous statements of interest and what the needs were in there and the way they're written. And then we evaluate those against the successful um, other districts in uh, in, in Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, as to how they um, strategically um, got themselves into the uh, the program with the MSBA. So the, the important part is Chip uh, wants to go through uh, uh, what his group found as going through and providing the facilities condition assessment. And then um, I will uh, talk about some of the costs with MSBA reimbursement costs and also um, a strategy for doing um, a statement of interest that we think might be beneficial to the, to the town. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chip to um, to proceed.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, as they said, my name is Chip Phillips. Uh, I've actually, the, the conduct of the conditions assessments is my specialty. I've been with Colliers for uh, just about twenty-one years and I was brought in for this reason. And, you know, we do a lot of this work, uh, and generally I manage all of that. Um, the importance of a current conditions analysis, or what we call the facilities condition assessment, it does set a baseline of what's needed to repair, to just bring your buildings back to where they were when they were built. Uh, doesn't address program issues, it's strictly fixing what you have. Um, and you know, that becomes a, a key, um, you know, decision point is when you start to see how much money is going to be needed to just fix buildings. So that's, that's what the, the purpose of this is really, is to help give you that baseline uh, to know where you're starting from. So we did go through both middle schools uh, at the beginning of March. Uh, looked at all of the major building components, the exterior shell, including roofs and windows, exterior doors and masonry, uh, the interior finishes, the ceilings, the, you know, flooring, um, casework, interior doors. Uh, we looked at the heating, ventilating, air conditioning systems, the electrical plumbing systems, uh, as well as any um, statutory issues related to code, uh, and also accessibility and the, the grounds as well. Again, focusing on the deferred maintenance capital needs, not on the program needs. Uh, during our assessment, we did identify almost two hundred individual projects across the two schools. Next slide? What we saw across the schools was uh, thirty-point-two million dollars worth of need. Again, that's just to fix what you have. Um, not every project is equal. We do look at them by a, a priority based on urgency. So those items that we saw as needing the most urgent, things that were failing or imminently going to fail, things that were costing more money by not doing them, things that um, were affecting program were priority one. And that was um, you know, almost, it was more than half of that need at seventeen-point-six million dollars. The next uh, area of urgency, priority two, was another ten million dollars. Those are the things that you really should be done in the next five years. And uh, a, a small proportion is what we continue to, uh, we, we consider deferrable, the priority three, that was another three million dollars. As we look across the needs, um, according to school, the pie chart on the left, on the right shows the total need uh, for each school. At Glenbrook at sixteen-point-one million dollars, which was a little over half of the need. Williams uh, fourteen-point-one was, you know, the remaining need. Um, you know, there, the schools are different sizes. So, you know, Glenbrook is much larger than Williams, so you really need to look at the relative need, where we take that dollar needed, divide it by the square footage. That showed that while Williams has a higher relative need, the urgency really does remain at Glenbrook, a priority one need of, of, you know, around a hundred and ten dollars a square foot. And certainly ask questions throughout this. I'd, you know, much rather have a discussion than um, just a, a presentation, but um, you know, so feel free. As I look at some of the details across each school, you know, I mentioned the major building components at the beginning. If we look at Glenbrook, we see that the highest total need is in the interior shell. Um, however, the highest priority need is in the HVAC. Exterior shell also has a, a high um, high priority need. Uh, projects that were identified in the exterior shell, for instance, is the roof. Um, there is a lot of patching that's going on, a lot of leaks along the flashing where the roof meets the masonry on the upper ru- uh, upper uh, wall areas. Um, interior, the, the um, doors, interior doors are all delaminating. Uh, they uh, don't have proper hardware. Uh, you can't secure them from the inside. Interior casework in the classrooms is aged and deteriorated. You've got the whole open classroom issue, which impacts not only program because of noise transference, both around the front as, as well as through the uh, movable partitions, which, you know, typically don't stop much sound, but also creates a security issue because lockdown becomes very difficult. On the, uh, HVAC side, um, you know, the whole system is beyond its useful life. It was, you know, originally built in 1967 and much of the equipment is, is original, uh, both in terms of its equipment as well as controls. Electrical, uh, while it's not a high number, is, is probably one of the biggest concerns. Uh, the electrical system is all old Federal Pacific equipment, original. Uh, Federal, Federal Pacific went out of business probably 25, 30 years ago. And part, you can't get parts. Um, you know, there's just a lot of problems with Federal Pacific, which is one of the reasons why they went out of business. Grounds issues related to, were, were identified related to the paving, as well as the, you know, the irrigation system is no longer functioning. Statutory issues, uh, the building's not sprinkled and as well as, um, it's very difficult to, um, secure the building at the front because of the layout of the way the main entrance and the main offices, uh, we wanna, um, we, we are recommending that that gets reconfigured to provide man trap entrance and direct access to, um, to the, to the front office when you enter. Accessibility, you know, there's no elevator. Uh, so you have to go around the outside of the building to get from level to level. And, uh, you know, most, many of the door widths are too, the doors that do exist are too narrow to meet ADA guidelines. Thing about Williams, you know, the exterior shell, uh, does show to be the highest priority, uh, need by far. You, you know, even though the total need is a little bit under the interior shell and the HVAC. Um, you know, here, you know, the overall party one need is only 49% versus, you know, almost 60, almost two thirds at Glenbrook. But, you know, here again, not only do you have the roof, but the windows, um, have not been replaced. They're all single pane with the, um, glazing compound just completely rotting out. Windows are loose. Um, that, that's a big priority. And the chimney has some pretty severe cracks in it that should be addressed. You have some of the same issues with the interior shell, with the interior doors that are due for replacement. Uh, casework, uh, both buildings auditorium seating is in pretty poor condition. Um, here you also have a lot more, um, uh, suspected asbestos in the ceiling tiles and in the flooring. Uh, the ceilings become an issue because of the roof where now you've got leaks coming through where you've got the glue on ceilings uh, that really should be addressed. HVAC is a big number, but it's not as urgent as, uh, Glenbrook. So some of the air handling units should be replaced in the next three years. Those again are original, 62 years old. Uh, but the rest of the bill, right, most of the system we're looking at, you know, in the five to 10 year range, uh, to upgrade that. Electrical, you do have original switchgear again, 62 years old. So that should be addressed. Uh, but again, most of that is a little bit down the road. Um, and if the statutory is another area with a high priority one need, um, again, you've got the sprinklers and the, the vestibule, uh, adj-, uh, um, you know, addressing the vestibule for security as well as the, uh, VAT floor tile that should be replaced. Any questions on the buildings before moving on?
Chip, as we transition to the next slide, I also should note, uh, that, uh, facilities director Nick Turgantus is with us this evening and, and he'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have as well.
I also want to point out that we're providing a lot of summary information. We did provide the detailed list in your packet. So, you know, you can feel free at your leisure to leaf through that to see some of the details and some of the items we're talking about.
Ryan? Yeah, I'm sorry. You probably couldn't see me. Is it okay to ask a question?
Yeah. Any members, when you want to have a question, just unmute yourself because I can't see everybody on the slide. So Deanna, go ahead, please.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. And thank you to our, our presenters and for all the, the, the research and all the, the work that you did. Um, I, I live in an old house and we had asbestos and, and knob and tube wiring. So when I hear you say asbestos and wiring, I'm like, i- is it not safe right now? Or like, how?
No, no, it, um, you know, not the asbestos is not friable. Um, you know, there's a survey that's done, uh, uh, on a very regular basis as required by law that looks at the condition, updates the condition. Um, as you, you know, e- each year, if there's something that becomes a concern, that gets addressed right away. Um, but you know, with the, the condition of the roof, it becomes a higher concern, particularly in the ceilings, I think. Um, and, and, you know, the, the Glenbrook electrical system is a concern.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So want to help kind of differentiate what the, maybe these maintenance and repair projects, um, provide and what they don't provide. If you were to do everything on this list and spend the, you know, the $30 million, you're going to have weather tight envelopes. You know, you're going to have new roofs and you're going to have windows where appropriate, doors and fixed masonry. So you don't have water and air coming through. You're going to be upgrading your interior finishes. So your flooring is in good condition, your ceilings, you're going to have new casework, you're going to have new doors, those kinds of things. You're going to have reliable mechanical and electrical systems. Um, at Glenbrook, you're going to have enclosed spaces. You know, that's while not technically a repair and maintenance project, it does have such an impact on both the educational program and the security of the building that we did want to list that. And included in that would be, you know, building new walls with lockable doors. It would be modifying the HVAC system to provide appropriate air movement, um, you know, in enclosed spaces where right now it's designed for a, um, you know, an open system, you'd have outlets on the walls as appropriate. So all of that would need to be done. You're going to have improved security. You're going to have new vestibules that, that put visitors right at the office. Um, and you're going to have improved ADA standards. You're going to be addressing bathroom issues, uh, where you don't have enough bathrooms. Um, and you're going to have an elevator at, at Glenbrook, those kinds of things. But it's important to understand what you're not going to have. Okay. You're fixing buildings from 1959 and 1967 to have buildings that were built in 1959 and 1967. You're not changing, you know, the out, the, the layout. You're not, um, you know, ma- matching the spaces with, with current middle school program is. You're going to have 1959 and 1967 spaces. Building, uh, the, the rooms are not going to meet the current state guidelines for space for each program in order to provide appropriate, um, educational opportunities. You're not going to have your science classrooms that have the current flexibility that you would look for. Um, you're still going to have spaces that are in, um, that, that have been adapted into spaces that they weren't intended. So you're going to have art rooms in non-art rooms. You're going to have, you go, build, uh, home act rooms that are used for other spaces. Um, libraries are not going to be true media centers. Um, you're not going to have all of those real support spaces that a current school would have. Particularly related to special education, you know, a lot of times those spaces get, you know, uh, are, are grabbed where you can find them instead of really designing a special education, uh, program around what it, what the needs of the students that it serves. And you're not going to have fully compliant and accessible buildings. So it's important to understand that, that by fixing things, you're not addressing any of those program, program type issues, uh, that are out there in the schools. Any questions on that? In order to try to, um, identify, you know, what that would mean to do the whole thing, we did look at what the cost of doing the repairs versus new construction would be. And I think Alan is going to walk you through the next, uh, slide to, uh, start to understand what that is.
Okay. Thank you, Chip. When we took a look at the, the cost, we, we figured, okay, how's the money best spent, um, to get you what you need or what you can afford, um, either way you want to look at it. But when we took a look at, um, the numbers that, that Chip's folks put together, uh, Glenbrook being approximately 16.1 million dollars to, um, refurbish it, um, to, for better use of a term, and Williams being 14.1 million dollars to refurbish that. You know, we're at, at a total of 30.2 million dollars. Um, we, if you got them into the MSBA's accelerated repair program, which handles roofs, boilers, windows and doors. Those are the only things that it really does cover. Um, there could be some reimbursement, uh, from the MSBA on doing those, uh, if, if you got, um, selected to be in those programs. Those are easier programs to get into with the MSBA than, um, the capital pipeline projects. So there's, um, but it's just timing and, and trying to hit the, hit the marks on what year you, you, uh, try to get into a program and what year you achieve that. So we took a look also at what would it be if we built two new schools, completely new schools, um, with the MSBA's help if we were part of their, um, their capital pipeline project. And we broke it down into, uh, two, um, enrollment figures, one with 330 students, which is approximately what we, we think, uh, that the Williams enrollment is, and the other was with 375 students, which is approximately what the Glenbrook was. Um, the, the cost of those two projects together would be approximately 93 million, 700,000 dollars. Of that, we work with the MSBA's 3011 form, which is a, a breakdown of their total project budget costs. And I think, uh, some of you may be familiar with that from when we did, um, when you did your high school project. And it, it takes into all account all the factors of the, of the budget, um, from OPM fees, architects' fees, uh, testing, um, construction contingencies, furniture's fixtures and equipment. Anything you can, you can think of that would be part of the building program, it takes that into account. So we filled out, um, three 3011 forms. Um, one for, as I said, the 375 student, um, middle school and another for the 330, uh, uh, enrollment school and came up with that figure of 30, uh, of 93 million, 700,000. And we looked at with your, a similar reimbursement rate that you had on the high school, which is approximately was 51% from the MSBA. Uh, not everything in that is eligible. So a lot of the things, uh, they max out at the dollars per square foot. They max out at, uh, only 8% of the, um, cost for site work. They, uh, max out FFTE furniture fixture and equipment at $1,200 per student. Um, technology, again, another $1,200 per student. So not every, you don't get, uh, uh, an actual 51% of, uh, the, your cost, uh, you know, give, uh, as a grant from the MSBA. So it, it reduces it down a little bit. Um, and, and when we put the 30 elevens together, we looked at what the maximum reimbursement would be to do those, those two schools separately as two new buildings. And it's approximately 35 million dollars that you get in, in grant reimbursement, um, on, on that 93, uh, million, 700,000 dollars for those two schools. So the potential cost to, uh, Long Meadow would be, uh, uh, you know, what we estimate is about 59 million dollars of that 93.7 million dollars. As opposed to the, the 30 million dollars for just refurbishing the two schools. We then took that and said, okay, what happens if we combine the two schools and make one large school of, say, 700 and, and I believe it was three, um, students or 700 and some odd, uh, students, uh, for, uh, com- combining both Glenbrook and, and Williams together. And we ran the 3011 form on that as well. And that total project came out to penciled out at about 77.4 million dollars, um, of which the town's share would be approximately 49.2 million dollars and the maximum reimbursement from MSBA would be approximately 28 million dollars. So there's, there's, um, economies in scale to combine the two schools, uh, less, you know, about $10 million less, uh, cost to the, the town of Long Meadow. And at the end of the day, you have a brand new facility for all your, all your students in one middle school. Or if you wanted to spend, uh, if 59 million dollars was attractive, for whatever reason that you wanted two different, separate schools, um, there's, there's that, uh, scenario you can look at also. But the, the 30 million, as Chip said, is, is just a refurbishment, is, uh, no, no modern, no, you get modernization of the buildings, but you don't get modernization of your programs within the building. It's not what we'd call 21st century education going on there. So that's, uh, the short story on, on the breakdown of the costs. And I can explain that further if you have any questions.
Ryan? Yep. And so thank you, uh, to, to the Colliers team and, and, uh, I think there's, there's sort of two components of tonight's presentation. One is the, sort of the inventory of projects that need to be addressed to, in the way Chip described, to get the buildings back to, uh, sort of 1967, 1959 condition. And so that's the, that's that short stack, the, the 30 million dollars in repairs. And then there's the, there's the consideration of sort of the strategy going forward to either accept that you're going to, um, address those repairs that are in the detailed inventory that are in your packet. Or do you, uh, more ambitiously plan to partner with the MSBA? And I think before we, we get into maybe Alan's side of the presentation, I, I'd like to maybe just spend a little time, um, illustrating some of the work that Chip talked about, if that's okay. And Nick Turgantus is with us tonight and, you know, Nick, if I could bring you into this and you've had now some time to get to know these buildings, especially this year in the midst of the pandemic. Is there anything, Nick, if I could put you on the spot to, that, that you would identify as sort of your concerns? I often think about, uh, the, the sustainability of the buildings and the, and the potential for systemic failure. Are there components, systems in these buildings that you're especially worried about, Nick, uh, as our facilities director?
Absolutely. Uh, you know, my first tour of the town buildings, when I first got this position, uh, there was a lot of, oh, wow. And there was a lot of, oh dear. And a lot of the oh dears highlighted in this assessment. Um, especially in the time of the pandemic, you know, HVAC concerns are, are tip, uh, the top of my food chain right now, you know. I, uh, worry a lot about systems failing because then we can't have any air, air exchange in these buildings. You know, it's really important that we're able to continue the programs on a day-to-day basis. And it starts with our HVAC systems, HVAC systems right now. Um, also the, the roofs, um, a roof leak leads to a lot of other issues. Uh, it accelerates building decay and it damages a lot of other systems. And these roofs, uh, badly need to be replaced. And it's been deferred for years and years in hopes of having this program come true, getting a new middle school. Um, so they certainly are things that, you know, keep me up at night.
And Chip, could I ask you, um, again, because I just want to put a finer point on some of the issues that, that you uncovered, Chip. Is there anything that, you know, when you think about the, the major systems, is there anything that you think we ought to be, uh, worried about if you were in our shoes in terms of the, the, the systemic issues that, that you've seen here?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Nick hit on the, the, some of the ones to me that I, I definitely, I mean, at Glenbrook, it is the electrical system and the roof as the top two priorities. Um, you know, I think the open classrooms because of their impact on, um, program and security is a concern of mine. And, uh, you know, and, and the toilet rooms are completely outdated for the most part. Uh, those are kind of my four top. Uh, at Williams, the windows, I would add to that along with the roofs. Um, you know, the ceilings with the glue on a, uh, you know, glue dabs, um, you know, is, is a concern related to the roof, I think, uh, the electric service and, and security issues there as well.
Thank you both.
Did you say me right?
Yep. Um, so, so Marty hit on the, the first question. I, I thanks everybody for, uh, giving that feedback. Um, my, my second question is around, uh, the second part of the presentation. I'm, I'm sorry, the gentleman after Chip, I, I didn't catch your first name.
I'm Alan Menkes, uh, with.
Alan, yep, I apologize. Um, so I was a little late. So, um, just one kind of more high level. And I know this is, you know, is it, you know, uh, you know, only to a certain degree here. Um, but the second phase of this, the one where it says new construction combined school, um, I get that that's $10 million less. Does that assume that the other school is gone in that case? Or does that assume that we still have a second school that's up that's not being used? Like, one of, that was incorporated.
Danny, you're talking about the middle bar in the, of the, of the three bars?
No. So if we went to one, uh, one school, so we obviously have.
we obviously have two schools right now that are both in a bit of disrepair. If you went one school, the assumption would be you're tearing down one school and building it back up for 700 students. Does that assume that the other school is just there in disrepair? Or does that assume that school is also completely torn down and, you know, taken care of?
On the 3011, we did put demolition for both schools in there. So that would just, that the schools are taken down. Now, someone may want to come in and say, no, wait a minute, we can repurpose that for something else. But we didn't, we didn't take that stuff. We took down both schools and then made, a decision would be made of which site was better for the construction of one combined new.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else with a question at this point? Marty?
And can I add to that, you know, one of the things that would have to happen if we were successful with the MSBA is they would conduct a feasibility study to help us identify the option that makes most sort of fiscal sense, most educational sense, and then the option that really this community could get behind. So there's a, you know, this is, I want to emphasize that the great work that Colliers has done is based very much on the MSBA process. But you, this doesn't, we don't want to sell this as the type of feasibility work or the type of study that would happen as a result of partnership with the MSBA.
Thank you. I was just curious, for the first option of maintenance and repair, where would the students be during these scenarios? I mean, obviously, some of the things wouldn't directly affect them, but it seems like most of the repairs would. And I'm not sure they'd be able to get done in the summer. So I'm just curious as to how that would be worked out.
That is always a concern. You know, trying to fix buildings with students in them is very difficult. And that's not something that we've really looked at at this point. Certainly, when you undertake, if you were to undertake a program like that, you would need to look at how you could phase it, whether across the building, or, you know, bringing in portables to create some swing space. You know, there's a number of different options. But it not only is, you know, doesn't help the educational programs, it is the most disruptive to the students of any of the three options.
And also, health-wise, that would be a concern, being able to, because a lot of these issues seem like they are health-related or could be, like leaks and things like that.
Yes, yep, yeah, certainly, roof leaks, old HVAC systems, they all impact the indoor air quality.
Jamie?
Yep, just one other question and really the professional opinion of whether it's Chip or Alan or Nick. So how much longer do we really have to wait here? And I know you don't have a crystal ball, I mean, but do we got five years, 10 years? I mean, some of these systems could fail and cost us a heck of a lot more money than even what you're putting on a piece of paper here. You know, let's say it's one of those situations where if you did a $20,000 new roof first, just waiting and let it leak into the rest of your house, turns into 40 or 50 or $100,000 problem. How much longer do we really have? I mean, in your opinion, I mean, you don't know, but is it 10 years or five? Or are we really on the brink of some pretty big issues?
Do you want me to start it? For a second. To me, time is up for the roofs at both sites. They really need to be changed. So that's certainly something I'd want to move on sooner than later. But, you know, it's tough to justify dumping the amount of money it would take to change these roofs if we're just going to tear the building down in a few years.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what we've identified and quantified have been, you know, talked about for some time with some of the other reports. So these are not new problems already, they've been deferred and deferred and deferred. And you really are reaching that point where you are going to start having major impacts in the, you know, in the near future, not five years, but the near future, related to roofs, related to some of the HVAC equipment, which has just been, you know, band-aided and fixed and coddled along. And great job by the department to keep the systems going. But you reach a point where parts aren't available and it becomes harder and harder and more expensive to do so. So I think you're at a, you've been putting this off long enough.
Anyone else with a question?
Ryan, it's Gianna, is it okay if I ask a question?
Of course.
So, yeah, so thank you all again. I was working in a building that was like, you know, 1935, I think. It got destroyed by a tornado and I was in portables. And then I was lucky enough to be part of, you know, kind of those conversations about, you know, the building. So now I'm in a brand-new, state-of-the-art building. But I just remember some of those conversations. It was like, this was the plan and then, oh, surprise, you know, like the grading and the leveling of the parking area that we thought the entrance and the exit was going to be didn't work out. So I'm just wondering, you know, again, like to Jamie's point, you don't have a crystal ball, but like, how much, how much is in these budgets is, you know, like kind of like that surprise factor? Like, you know, you thought it was going to be a million, but it ends up being like 3 million.
As far as the maintenance and repairs, you know, we try to factor some of that in, but we need to be realistic. You know, we can't just, you know, inflate numbers for the what-ifs all over the place. You know, we base it on our experience with similar projects. We've run into kinds of things. We base it on, you know, industry, you know, cost indexes and, you know, whatever research that we can do. We have not done any design work. You know, this is strictly, you know, a one day at each school visual inspection with an order of magnitude budget put together on some of the big things where we think, okay, these are the kinds of, this is the way we would likely try to address it. Now let's make sure that the budget's enough to have some flexibility in that. But, you know, in any case, you know, you're going to need to design what happens with the front entrance. You're going to need an engineer to tell you what the appropriate HVAC system is for the space. So we have those costs, those soft costs included in our budgets. But, you know, we haven't, we haven't designed it because right now no project has been selected. There hasn't been any discussion with users about, you know, how to program it or any of those things.
Awesome, thank you, Chip. Yeah, I, you know, again, I think I was thinking maybe more about the, if we were to go with the new construction, I was specifically thinking of like a combined school of, you know, again, like those. So thank you, because you, yeah, so it comes down to those later. And I think Marty was talking about it too, more like the feasibility and the.
Right.
Awesome, all right, thanks, Chip.
Yeah, those become, the feasibility becomes much more detailed where you do get into, you know, really looking at the different programs of each school, each option, and both from a facility standpoint as well as an educational standpoint, and try to match the best solution that meets both the educational needs as well as being fiscally responsible. And we have any of those discussions.
If I could add to that, Gianna, on the new solutions for the two, the construction of two new schools or the combined new school, the 3011 form does take into account all the line items that a good project budget takes into account. And in fact, on top of all that, it adds in a construction contingency of 5%, which is probably pretty standard for a brand-new construction. And then on top, with that, it also adds in a owner's contingency, your contingency of 2.5%. So there's a good nut of money, if you will, for things that could come up during construction or be unknowns that are found on the site, need to be handled and taken care of. So, you know, we've, I've been doing this now, and I used to be with J C J Architecture, so, you know, I have some history with your previous study. But I've been doing this now for 11 years as an OPM. And the budgets we put together usually will always come out with monies left over instead of money spent to handle all the issues.
Perfect, thank you, Alan.
Lizzy?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Having, you know, overseen a renovation project in a school building when I was a superintendent, it was frustrating because, you know, eight years prior, we had had a, we had had a, you know, quote for how much the project would cost. And then, you know, five, eight years after that, it was, you know, 5 million more than it was the previous. So you really, where you're going to incur the costs is by waiting. That's really where the hidden costs are, you know. And that's the challenge that we face is that, you know, we're in this position of we keep submitting these requests, these statements of interest, and we're not getting anywhere. So, you know, I think, you know, Nick put it bluntly, like, we're past the point on some of these. And how, so how can we put together a more compelling statement of interest? How do we get more support? I don't think, I don't think we haven't had the support at the town level, but, you know, how do we kind of push this so that people realize and recognize the need? And again, I'm not, my point in saying like that, you know, the money just goes up year after year after year. I think we've done our due diligence. It's like, how much, is there anything more we can do to kind of push this where it needs to go?
So I'll start and Alan, feel free to jump in. I think you're asking the critical question and that's something that Alan and Tom and I have spoken about at length. And I think what we heard from our Colliers partners is to, you know, create a compelling, maybe leaner and meaner SOI. I'm proud of the SOIs that we've developed. They're data-heavy, they include a lot of information from the old J C J's reports that we had back in 2015. And I think they make a compelling educational argument. But what Alan is trying to tell us basically is get their attention. You get invited into the program and then the possibilities open up. So if you, if you get their attention even with a single building, you've got an opportunity to have a wider discussion about our needs across two buildings. So that's a, that's a, you know, kind of a different approach that we want to talk to Colliers further about and talk to the school committee about as well. Ultimately, we need, not tonight, but at some point, we'll want you to let us know if you want to pursue an SOI, another statement of interest, or if you'd rather pursue a different path. And if we do pursue that SOI, then I think we would want to talk to you about that sort of leaner and meaner strategy that Alan has talked to us about. And I appreciate him bringing that to our attention. Not sure, you know, exactly what that would look like just yet, but that's something that we can explore. And if I could, I'll just, I'll just hit, just want to jump over the other slide deck here. The, the SOI window of opportunity has opened up with the, with the MSBA. And we have until June to submit another statement of interest. And so that's something that we have some time and we've got some good data to work with.
Marty, when you say leaner and meaner, are you kind of pointing to, so in this report that Chip provided, he really gave us a breakdown that clearly the biggest need is at Glenbrook. So if we were to kind of streamline and focus our report mostly on Glenbrook and then, you know, following your logic of getting invited into the program for a single school and potentially that opens up the opportunity to consider, you know, sort of the ecosystem of our schools, right? Specific to Long Meadow, is that, is that what you're?
I, that is, and I think Chip is probably in the best position to answer to that. So Chip, you want to share some ideas or thoughts on that?
Sure, actually, I'm going to probably toss that over to Alan as we think about the.
Yep, sorry about that, yep.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go too deep into this because, you know, you put together two SOIs that are all done for both Glenbrook and for Williams. And what we don't want to see is somebody saying, well, wait a minute, I want that one. And somebody saying, no, that one's more important and have this political issue in town. Because it's, what other districts have done is strategic. And they had the same issues that Long Meadow has. And that strategy was to go in with their worst-case scenario and sell that to the MSBA as the biggest need and get their senior staff to come out and view those schools. And I believe that senior staff from MSBA have come out and viewed both your schools. So that issue is in their mind. But when they did, the three that come to mind are in Granby, they went for West Street Elementary School. By the time they got done, they did a combination on West Street as well as East Meadows. And they have a combined elementary school there. In, up in Gardner, we just, we're under construction right now on a project that they went in for their Water Street Elementary School and did the SOI for just the Water Street Elementary School. And it, through the feasibility phase of the project, they ended up being able to do a combination of Water Street and their Elm Street School. And that building's being constructed now as a combination school. The one that's really the grand slam that we did was in East Hampton with Nancy Folesby, who was the superintendent up there. Nancy spent year after year writing SOIs to the MSBA and could not get them to come in and take a look at White Brook Middle School, which has an open plan, and did not function well for them, but it was built in the 70s. So, you know, MSBA was saying, you don't, we have schools that are worse than this, that need more attention across the Commonwealth than this. She finally went in with just the Maple Elementary School, which is a 120-year-old school of, you know, that it was a disgrace, students were still being brought to there for education. And got the MSBA's attention and they got into the capital pipeline project with Maple Elementary School. And from that, it turned out that it was not only Maple Elementary, but Center Elementary and Pepin Elementary and White Brook. And right now, under construction is a 1,010-student K through 8 school being built on the existing site for White Brook School. So that's, those are the three success stories that I can tell you about that we've been involved with. And other districts and other OPMs have similar stories to tell as well. But it's get in there with the biggest need to get their attention so that they know that they have to allocate some funds to get you into the program. They have 90 applications come in every year and they only let about 10 to 12 projects go into the capital pipeline project. So the odds are stacked against every district that's trying to do this. So you gotta, you gotta sell, you gotta use that strategy to sell your worst-case scenario to them and drive home the need. Thank you, I know, I called out a question earlier.
Hi, thank you very much, all of you, for coming out and walking us through this tonight. My question is related to the priority one status that you have. And looking at that, wondering if we decided to move forward with another SOI and we were successful with this coming year, then it looks like this is roughly a seven-year process from this application until the school is built. So looking at that priority one number of 17.6 million, I'm wondering how much of that is likely to come calling before the buildings, before a new building or buildings are built? In other words, what does that do to the actual financial cost of new construction?
Right. You know, certainly, there will need to be projects that are undertaken in order to keep the buildings operating. You know, seven years seems like a long time that it would take. But, you know, if it is seven years, you are going to need to do some significant roof work. You know, you're not going to do wholesale roof replacements, but you're going to have to do, you know, more than just patching. You're going to have to replace some HVAC equipment. Other equipment, you're going to, you know, continue to just Band-Aid along and keep it running. You know, some of, you probably have to replace electrical main service gear. But you wouldn't necessarily go through and do all the distribution panels and all the wiring. You would just, you know, keep that going along as you could. So, you know, it's hard to say exactly what you would need to do. Uh, but there will need to be repair projects that, you know, some of which will be costly in order to get you um that length of time.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to uh thank the team at Colliers and also uh Mr. Bazza and Nick Chergantis and the whole team that was able to somehow get Glenbrook and Williams um able to be open for the students this year. Um, cause based on all the things that I've seen, uh even in the more detailed report, it's was quite the accomplishment. So that is very much appreciated. Um, one question I had is I saw an article today that some construction costs are up like a hundred and eighty percent right now due to many different factors. Um, so were these numbers built on current costs of construction materials or?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. They're, they're built on current costs. Um, you know, the um, you know, it was mentioned how much increases over time. Um, well, I'm sorry, the repair and maintenance costs are, are current. Alan can speak to the construction costs, but the, you know, the, where um inflation may be going at, you know, one and a half, two percent. Construction costs right now overall are in the, you know, four to five percent range. So, you know, there is uh a significant cost awaiting. And Alan, I'll let you talk about how the uh MSBA budgeting works.
Right. On, on the, the thirty eleven form, um, and you're right, it's about four percent that we've seen on average that construction costs are going up every year. Um, we have uh certain spikes right now. Lumber is a big spike because there's just not, there's not lumber and affecting a lot of residential or stick built um type dwellings. But um in the thirty eleven form for the construction portion of that budget number, we take um the um inflation to the midpoint of construction. So, you know, it is five to six, sometimes seven years for these projects to, to uh come to, from start to before the students move in. And so um we take it, we factor in, okay, how long is it going to get, take to do the feasibility study portion? How long is it going to take to get through um the schematic design portion, uh get the town to vote on it? Let the architects and engineers do their bid documents and then put it out to bid, start construction. And so there's a, there's a couple of years that happened there. And then we, then the midpoint of construction is a couple of years in, in from that point. So we, we escalated at that four percent rate up to that point in time and carry that number in the budget. So we're not using today's numbers when we, we uh put that thirty eleven together. We're, we're taking numbers that are, are way in advance, are way out in the future uh to come up with that budget number.
Okay, thanks. Just one follow up question. Um, I don't know if the meeting is later on, but um there would be savings in terms of operating costs, right? Because the buildings would be much more um insulated and the electricity, everything would be more efficient.
Chip, uh, do you want to handle that? I mean, yes, uh, it, the, the simple answer is yes. Um, usually there, you know, some of the systems are more complex than the, the current systems you have in the buildings. Um, that's can be good and bad, that, that they don't cost as much to operate, but they require more technical expertise to, to uh, to run them. So there's some operational costs. There may be labor or, or the type of people that you have operating those buildings than uh previous, but uh the, the, the short answer is yes, they're more energy efficient. They're um, we, we do go for the extra reimbursement points, uh incentive points to get you lead silver or better. Um, that's um, you know, to make it more energy efficient, more environmentally friendly and, and safer for the students to be in. So um the, the costs and, and the costs escalate too to operate a building over the years. Electricity goes up every year or, you know, oil goes up every year. However, you're heating the building goes up every year. So those, those costs, um, you know, you have to inflate those every year for inflate, for the inflation factor as well.
And, and just to, to add on to that, you know, the, those savings though are never as much as you would think they would be. Uh, the current codes for HVAC require so much more outside air, for instance, um that, you know, you're, you're adding air changes. So while the systems and the equipment is more efficient, you're doing more with it. Um, so, so i- it's rare that it's, it's as much of a savings as you kind of think it would be. Unless you get into some, you know, significant geothermal kinds of systems and things like that, which have more upfront costs.
Uh, Kevin, you had your hand up earlier. Do you still have a question?
Thanks, Ryan. I wonder if we could just get some perspective on this. Um, when we did the high school project, I would love to remind everybody and everybody also include me in that. Um, you know, what, what were the costs to that? What were the costs to the town? I mean, the proposals we're looking at right now, the cost of the town ranged between thirty and fifty million dollars. What did we end up spending on the high school project?
Might defer to Mr. Bazza if it's been a little while. Uh, I might have to go back into the record books and the archives for that.
I would have to get back to you on that one. I, I don't know the exact number when all is said and done for the high school project.
Right. No, that, that's fine. I mean, I think at a future meeting, that would be great. And I also want to get back to the question that was just posed, which is we clearly can answer that question for the high school. It would be great to see what were the last five years of the old high school? What were the first five years of the new high school? And then we'll see in our own town, you know, what happened when we went to a state of the art building. Um, that would be really helpful to see.
Did that a little bit. I mean, I think to Chip's point, the modern systems have more fans and electrical components to it. So our electrical consumption increased from the old building, but the amount of natural gas that we were consuming was reduced substantially based on the efficiency of the new boilers. So do you think there was some increase in electrical costs that was offset by reductions in natural gas consumption? We could give that improvement there.
Uh, sure. Um, so again, I, I, I want to bring us back to a phrase that Chip used earlier and that was order of magnitude, you know, the, the numbers that we're talking about here are uh, you know, help us chart a path forward. They are not, you know, we shouldn't look at them as, as actual costs. They, uh, uh, obviously a considerable amount of study has gone into them uh based on what Alan has said and what Chip has said. But these are order of magnitude numbers that, that will help us understand uh the, the problem that is in front of us. And it is interesting, obviously, to consider um the potential for a single middle school. There would be a kind of the economy of scale operationally that we just talked about. You can also think about the economy of scale that you get educationally when you combine uh into a single middle school. We have two uh frankly, very undersized middle schools. Typically, Massachusetts middle schools are around six hundred, seven hundred students. So um to, to have, having said that, I completely recognize that uh the value of two neighborhood middle schools. And that's a conversation that we would have to uh engage the MSBA in and engage the community in and, and, and we, we really need to go through that very thoughtful process to determine what might be the best path forward. I pulled up a, a, a statement that was included in a previous SOI which indicates, you know, that, and, and this is still our position. I'd say that we're, we're open to exploring a range of options to determine, you know, what would be the most uh fiscally responsible and educationally effective model to serve students over the next fifty years. And then finally, um, we talked a little bit about timeline. This is our, you know, sort of best estimate of what the potential timeline would look like. Um, and, and this could be accelerated by some factors or it could be slowed down, but uh if we were to submit in June of twenty one, the MSBA would take its time to review it through, through the rest of twenty twenty one. And, and if we were fortunate enough to be invited into the program, it would launch with that feasibility study. The reason I have the, the stop signs there is those are the stages where uh local approval is needed. Uh, local approval would be needed from the select board and the school committee to submit the SOI. If the, if the feasibility study involved borrowing, it would need town approval. And then finally, once a, a uh, uh, an option is selected, uh, the scope of the project is defined and the budget is defined at that point, once again, you go back to the residents uh for approval. So it is a, it's a lengthy process, uh, you know, perhaps uh anywhere from five to, to seven years. Uh, but it is something that I, I like the way Chip uh and Nick talked about the, you know, the potential work that might need to be done in the interim as we, as we go through this process. I do think, um, uh, so we had submitted an SOI in June of twenty twenty. Uh, you'll recall, uh, the MSBA board is voting on those applications this week. That's my understanding. My sense is that we would know, we would have been told if we, if we were going to be invited in. Um, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised, but I wouldn't expect that to be the case. I think we would have been, I think Chairman Kelly or I would have received a, a phone call if we were going to be invited in based on the twenty twenty SOI. So we have a decision in front of us as to whether or not to pursue another SOI in twenty twenty one. I do think we are um getting the attention of the S, of the MSBA. Um, it, it, it's hard to sometimes read that black box, but they have sent a senior study team here. I feel like they're, they're more engaged and more interested in what is happening in Long Meadow. That's, that's my sense. So uh, you know, I think Colliers has come to us with some fresh information and some potentially some fresh approaches that we hope to continue to talk to the school committee about in the, in the weeks and months ahead. But with, with the idea of deciding whether or not to submit an SOI in twenty, for twenty twenty one. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? So what's our next step for tonight, Marty?
Uh, no action required. Uh, I think it, we would come back to you after you've had time to consider tonight's report, after you've had time to go through the detailed documents that Colliers has provided. Perhaps you'll want to go back through the previous SOIs. But at a, at an upcoming meeting, we would come back to you to get some direction as to whether or not you felt uh you, you'd like us to begin work on a, another application to the MSBA or if you felt that there was another path forward. The other, the other thought is I, I, you know, we, I think it's important to um engage uh other stakeholders, even at this early stage. Um, specifically the uh, the, the select board and town officials. Um, that might be something that we could talk about as well is, is how you might want to bring this information forward to the wider community and to other stakeholders.
Thank you. Look forward to that. If there's nothing more on this, we'll move to the next item.
Thanks, team.
Thank you. And we look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you. Thank you for the, your time.
Yes, thank you.
Especially when you show us how to write a successful report and get us.
No pressure.
Oh, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Marty, super competing with me.
Just a, a couple of items. Uh, we're, we're coming up on uh the, the vacation week and we're looking forward to welcoming uh more students back on April twenty sixth uh at the high school and the middle school. It's an exciting time for us. Uh, we're also um sort of mindful of current COVID trends. Uh, we, we have communicated to the staff and to families that we are, we continue to adhere to the travel advisory that came up in your last meeting. And so we'll be sending another reminder out uh to our families. I would say to any families that might be watching tonight, um, you know, our, uh, if, if families are traveling, they'll need to supply uh our schools with the appropriate documentation demonstrating that they've met the requirements of the travel advisory. And that will require our nurses to uh sort of uh clear uh students for their return on the twenty sixth. And I would just ask families to be patient with us that, that clearance um will happen as uh, as quickly as possible. Uh, but it's possible that even on Monday, on the twenty sixth, our nurses will still be reviewing documentation to clear students. And so uh, families shouldn't send children to school until the, until children have been, have been cleared and all that documentation is in. Um, another thing uh is uh end of year events. Um, I, I know that's of interest to this committee. Uh, high school graduation is uh June third. Eighth grade graduation, I believe, is tentatively scheduled for June eleventh. We have rain dates associated with both of those. Uh, high school admin is, has asked uh the senior class uh what they would like to do in terms of a senior prom. There are, you know, obviously some restrictions statewide on uh what a prom could be. And so they're, to their credit, the high school admin is engaging the, the students in that conversation and, and trying to get some feedback from them as a group. Uh, and then MCAS planning is, is going on. Um, the eleventh grade test was uh for, our eleventh graders will not have to sit for the MCAS. Our tenth graders will. And it's obviously still a high stakes test. And it, it, it requires, you know, to do that in the midst of the pandemic requires some, some creative scheduling. So the high school admin team is working on that as well. So other than that, I think I'm all set.
Thank you. Um, just from your reporter, I'm gonna echo what you said about vacation week. Just be smart.
We can't, we can't hear you, Ryan. I think as you and Marty have, your mic's on.
Marty, can you mute?
How about now? So literally I was echoing what Marty said earlier, unintentionally, which is to be smart over vacation week. We don't want to take any steps back. So please follow the rules wherever it is you go and be safe so that we can keep getting more and more kids into schools. Um, Maxim gave us a report earlier, so now we have other reports. Brownland, do we have LPVC? I'm sorry, Kevin, go ahead. If, if you don't mind me following up on, on your report and Marty's report, um, I, I just hope people understand the new variant is very different than the, the virus we thought we were dealing with. Um, if you've been following the reports, this new variant is much more uh transferable by kids. And for a lot of reports, the kids don't get very sick, but they give it to everybody in their family. Um, and so it's really important that people recognize we're so close to the end. Um, so close to the end. Just try and wait it out. Um, but don't think that these new variants are the same as what we were dealing with a year ago. They're not. Um, so really, really, really be safe. Um, because you're going to get us to the finish line. You're going to get our kids back in school. If you need any, you know, motivation, look at Michigan. Michigan is closing schools right now. Um, and, and we don't want that to happen to us. Thank you, Ryan.
Go, Penny.
Just to add one more thing. Thanks for that, Kevin. I appreciate the exclamation point you put on that. I think that, that's excellent. And, and you know, all year long, we have said, we've seen no evidence of, of uh in-school transmission. There's at least one case that we're exploring right now that we're, we're trying to understand the, the transmission link. So it, it, it does feel, you know, we, we saw it, it settled down a little bit this week, but we had, we definitely saw an increase in the number of active cases in town um in the previous week. So uh, we, we'll continue to monitor that and, and uh be sure that we can safely open on the, on the twenty sixth to the wider group of students.
Thank you.
Uh, no.
Space or sustainability? Oh, Jamie? Jamie, you didn't have another report, right? You're good. You're good. Thank you. Finance sub did not have a report and policy sub does. At least it's on my agenda. Does policy sub want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that if it would be helpful.
You read my mind. Thank you, Superintendent.
So no action required tonight. But there are a few policies that were posted to your packet. They relate to essentially removing, ensuring that we have policy that removes the barriers to the admission of homeless students, foster children and children of military families. And so I'm pleased that Jean Fontaine brought that to our attention. Actually, came as part of a DESI, what's called a tiered focus monitoring review to make sure that our policies are in accord with the latest state requirements for the admissions of students in those areas. So those are available. We will put those up on the website for public comment. And at a future meeting, they'll come up for a vote. And happy to answer any questions you might have now or at any time about those policies.
Brownwin, a little bit about you.
Yes, we did meet right before this meeting. Dr. O'Shea provided us with a Long Meadow Public Schools evaluation update and is going to get us some additional information. And we discussed the preparation for the end-of-year evaluation that the School Committee members will do. So Dr. O'Shea and I are going to pick a date for our next eval Subcommittee meeting. And he'll be presenting the, will be presenting the findings in June. Thanks.
Any questions about that from anybody? According to my agenda, we are at the end. Unless there's something else that I missed. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make it. All right, I move that the School Committee adjourned the April 13th, 2021 School Committee meeting.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Brownwin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion has passed the seventh year. Thank you, folks. We will see you next time.
Good night.